Good evening. The July 8th meeting of the Nixon City Council would now come to order. Mrs. Coffey, roll call please.
Kelly Morris.
Here.
Sean Lucas.
Here.
Aaron Peterson.
Here.
Darlene Graham.
Here.
Zern Vess.
Here.
Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I added a little something to the agenda tonight, but it's okay. Don't freak out.
It's okay.
On the evening of June 30th at approximately 8:50 PM, Christian County Deputy Sheriff Mike Adams and his wife Ashley tragically lost their lives when their vehicle was struck head-on by a suspected impaired driver. Both Deputy Adams and Mrs. Adams were pronounced deceased at the scene. Deputy Adams dedicated his life to serving and protecting our community with honor and distinction. His commitment to public safety and his service to Christian County exemplified the highest ideals of law enforcement. We extend our deepest condolences to the Adams family, their loved ones, and our colleagues at the Christian County Sheriff's Department during this difficult time. The loss of Deputy Adams represents not only a tragedy for his family, but also a profound loss for our entire community. I will now ask that we observe a moment of silence to honor the memory of Deputy Sheriff Mike Adams and his wife Ashley and reflect on their lives and the sacrifice made by those who serve in law enforcement. Thank you. Now something a little more happy. First up, we have our awards and recognition, and this is quite an award. Mrs. Rebecca Coffey and her newly achieved certification. Mr. Lyles.
Mayor and Council, today I have the honor of recognizing a major professional achievement by one of our very own city clerk, Becca has officially earned the Missouri Registered City Clerk for the MRCC certification to the Missouri City Clerk and Financial Officers Association for the MCC FOA. There's a lot of... Yeah, okay, that's close, right? Listen, I'm a whole deal with that. This is a, this is no small accomplishment. The MRCC certification is part of a multi-year, two-tiered program that promotes continued education and professional growth for municipal clerks across the state. To achieve this certification, Becca completed over 100 hours of education, demonstrated more than a decade of experience in municipal government, and actively participated in the MOCFFOA conferences and activities. She not only meets the requirements, she's gone above and beyond. Becca is currently on the executive board and serves as the president of our local MOCFFOA division and sits on the State Education Committee, helping to guide the development of others in the profession. This certification is a reflection for hard work, dedication, and commitment to excellence in public service. It also puts her one step closer to the next milestone, the Missouri Professional City Clerk Certification, which she'll be eligible for in three years. We are grateful to have Becca's leadership, knowledge, and integrity represented in the city of Nixon. So please join me in congratulating Becca on this outstanding achievement. She'll actually receive her certification, or even certificate for the certification in the spring. We haven't had it for a year.
Awesome. I think if they were to make an All-Star team for the Missouri City Clerks, Nixon would definitely have two of them. That's for sure. So please stay here. All right, well, next up, the visitors section, and so I will open the public hearing. We currently have one visitor that has submitted interest to speak prior to the meeting. That'd be Mr. Brian Popejoy.
Best way to follow that up is with a failure, so we're gonna talk about that. Brian Popejoy, 612 North Alexandria Street. Back in April, I filed for the August 5th election for the District 1 seat. Filed all my paperwork with the city, got my MEC paperwork, did not file that on time. So the Missouri Ethics Commission sent me a letter telling me I am no longer valid to run. So if you're here in District 1, please don't vote for me. Might make things a little harder on Rebecca, but other than that, that's what I came here to say.
Do appreciate you coming and letting us know, and obviously, we appreciate your service already. You know, you've been with the Planning and Zoning Commission and done a great job. So we're definitely, definitely looking forward to you continuing to be involved, but we get it.
Yeah.
Life is busy. I mean, today, you almost missed today.
Yeah.
Is your kid okay?
Yeah, yeah, he's just got a hairline fracture. We've all had them.
Yeah.
No biggie.
Typical day in the Popejoy household.
Yeah. Really kind of is, actually.
Well, definitely thank you, and next time, I'll help you go through that paperwork.
All right, yeah, we'll do it together.
Thank you very much. So we will, just so everyone is aware, the council and myself, we are allowed to post about that. The city is not because it would be considered them somewhat endorsing a single candidate or not endorsing a single candidate. So definitely reach out to any of your friends, anyone you know in District 1. Might be cool to get someone outside of our neighborhood because that seems to be the only place we get them. I know there was a couple that we had mentioned, so anyone you can think of that'd be a good fit, send them our way. I'm more than happy to meet with them and talk to them about what's involved and all that good stuff, so. All right. Mrs. Coffey, do we have anybody else signed up? All right. If you did not sign up to speak on a topic that is not on the agenda, but you would like to, you may come forward at this time. Fair enough. I will now declare the visitor public hearing closed. All right, next up, first reading of ordinances. Mrs. Coffey, could you please read Council Bill 2025-22?
First reading Council Bill Number 2025-22, in ordinance of the Council of the City of Nixa, amending Chapter 117, Article 4, Section 117-90, Part 2 of the Nixa City Code for the purpose of clarifying and standardizing the table of approved uses as to pet grooming and kenneling businesses. Presenting is Planning and Development Director Scott Goppe.
Mayor, Council, good evening. Staff recently met with a potential small business owner that is looking to locate here in the city of Nixa. She has a pet grooming business. The facility that she is looking to purchase, under further review, we realized that the zoning did not match the land use. Or the zoning she was trying to go into, the land use was not on or an approved use in that zoning district. We also, upon further review, discovered that there's some discrepancy when it comes to two specific land uses in our table of approved uses. Kennels and pet grooming services both either have outdoor runs or they don't have outdoor runs, so they're both classified in there. When we look at our definition section in our code, they're actually defined together. So there was, not sure why they're separated out here, but we decided in our way to fix this is to combine them. But you see with the current code, you would think with kennels with outdoor runs, or excuse me, pet grooming services with outdoor runs would require special use permit in neighborhood commercial. But you notice it's not even allowed, but then pet grooming services without outdoor runs, meaning there's no real impact to the surrounding property owners because there's no pets or dogs doing what dogs do outside in that area, but that did require a special use permit. So we felt like those were kind of flipped. So in our proposed amendment, we're combining them and then also allowing, if they do not have outdoor runs, then you are an approved use in neighborhood commercial. If you do want outdoor runs, then we do require a special use permit, so that way there's still a little more oversight depending on the specific location and its surroundings. The other thing that we're changing in this is that we also are removing it from the M1 zoning district due to just lack of space in our M1 zoning district. So kind of help preserve some of that space for more industrial uses. We're removing it. This was read in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission. No one approached the commission, so therefore they voted unanimously to recommend approval to Nixon City Council. Staff recommends approval as it will help clean up our table of approved uses to properly reflect what we feel is correct and also is in line with what our surrounding communities are doing as it relates to pet grooming and kenneling services. If you have any questions, I will attempt to answer them.
So I understand why this was done the way it was back then, but just curious. With the legislation that passed with home-based businesses, if she was doing this exact same business out of her house, none of it would matter, correct? Okay.
We would have to research that.
It's been a minute since I reviewed those, but I would, we updated the home-based business code, so I thought we did. We did.
It's on the list.
I'm pretty sure, well, I'm pretty sure we did.
We'll discuss.
Yeah.
I love when I stump you guys.
I think the way that that statute is written, it's anything that is happening outside of the house is something that we can regulate, but if it's all happening inside, then we can't. So I guess it would depend on the run situation, like what is that going to be? And would we have any ability to put reasonable restrictions on that? But yeah, we'd have to do a deep dive on that.
Kind of depend on your definition of run as well, wouldn't it? Because you could consider your entire backyard a run?
I mean, yeah, I don't know, and that would be one of those things that's occurring outside the house. So from my memory, I recall that we had a little bit more regulatory authority there, but I don't remember exactly what the contours of that were.
And I would figure on a grooming business, I mean, actually, my, both my dogs got groomed today. And I think their goal is for when the person comes to pick it up, for the dog to still smell good and be clean. So letting it out in the backyard is probably not what they want to do. But what I was getting at is I don't see any reason why this shouldn't be allowed there. I think it'd be a perfect spot for it, too. Any questions?
By definition, it's pet grooming and/or kenneling, so it could be one or the other or both?
Correct.
Just to encompass all facets?
Are you suggesting we change the...
No, I was just for clarification.
Okay, gotcha.
I mean, one thing to think about. I mean, how many dogs can a kennel have? Is there a limit?
Not that I'm aware of. There may be some state statute that would limit them. Our business liaison seems to know the answer to that. Yes. She's very knowledgeable on it.
Yeah. I mean, not asking you to amend this or anything, but it'd be worth looking into because if a place was holding 15, 20 dogs and it's a neighborhood commercial and it's, I mean, it's holding them consistently have that many dogs every day and night, you're, you'll get into a lot of nuisance issues. Just a thought. So might look into that because I don't know many neighborhoods that would be okay with.
Mayor, Council, I might offer some insight on this as well. We do have animal ordinances that do regulate the number of animals you can have, and I think it refers to R1 zone districts. So there are some animal ordinances that may apply, be applicable to limit home-based businesses in particular.
Oh, okay. I didn't know if those just applied to your animals.
Well, it's R1. It's R1, not, not any of these, though. So if you want us to look at some kind of limitation, that would be, I think that would be good direction from council if that's a concern that you have, especially in the neighborhood commercial, since that might be something that abuts a single family or other residential uses.
I mean, this is one of those things that hasn't, hasn't come up before, but I mean, think of any open, think of any open lot by, you know, where you guys live or any other neighborhood in your district. What if a doggy hotel was put in there? How many calls would you get?
How close, though, is neighborhood commercial buildings to actual residential buildings, like residential homes?
This one is touching property line.
Yeah, it could be adjacent.
You look at, I mean, look at the new development in Wicklow, that neighborhood commercial is right there. Right across the street on two different sides and then sharing the side of the street with the multifamily. So. Granted, there's different ways to do the kennels, too. I mean, they might, there's different ones that they will be outside the majority of the time, and there's a lot where they keep them inside.
Yeah, we'll come back to some.
There's a lot to think about on that, but I don't want to, I mean, I don't want to slow her process down because I'm, I know that if she is purchasing the business, which she is, I mean, there's some deadlines for her. I know this is something that we can always come back to, but I wouldn't want to.
Or we could do...
Main Street, you're Main Street, you're going to have business on Main Street. You're going to have business, you're going to have noise, just like 14, just like 160, just like CC. There is going to be noise and there's going to be business. Those are commercial corridors that we have to have. That's, I mean, that's what makes Main Street, Main Street.
But we can't let her good intentions put us in a bad spot for somebody who doesn't have good intentions. Like you said, somebody opens up, anybody who's in business is going to try to grow the business, so they open up with, not again, this customer, but somebody else was to open up and some of these stuff that's right next to a neighborhood, and they're doing good. They grow it up and they've got, you know, 10 or 15 dogs. Do we let them stay out overnight? Do we, like, what's the limitations kind of stuff? And I think there should be something that the residents, the citizens would want in place to make sure that that noise isn't. Same thing, I don't think mechanics can go through that. I don't know what all can go in there, but there's probably some noise limitations.
Yeah, with our code change, with outdoor runs does require a special use permit, so at that point, we could put limitations on it, but we'll come back with some specific information.
Setbacks on outdoor runs as well?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
That'd be another thing maybe to look at. I don't know.
That's kind of what I'm thinking. So because it's neighborhood commercial and we have it indicated as requiring a special use permit, those are those situations where we would have additional conditions, like conditions precedent or like use restrictions after the permits issued that would allow you to regulate those kinds of things. And if they ever are in violation of that, you revoke the permit and they're in violation of the zoning ordinance at that point. So, and that, so that makes sense to me that you would want those to be approved by a special use permit so you can do that additional review to see if those, whatever those conditions might be, whether it's the limitation on how many animals or a setback requirement. You can review that through the special use permit process.
I think if you have setbacks on chicken coops, you definitely want them on dog kennels because dogs are a lot louder than chickens.
Mayor, I just pulled up the Article 4, Section 11795, and it talks about home occupations. And it says the following are prohibited as home occupations, and it's barber shops and beauty parns with more than one chair, animal hospitals, dance studios, mortuaries, nurseries.
That's the code section that hasn't been updated yet?
Yeah, that's, that's not legal anymore.
That one's not.
Because now state legislation passed that requires you can't really do anything.
One of them was stables or kennels and that is more, so.
Yeah, you can't do anything anymore with home-based businesses really. Which, and that was the concern on that, is you'd like to know if your neighbor has chemicals in their house that whatever they may or may not be doing, but that's why we ask that people at least get a business license if they are going to be doing home-based business, but.
I feel like we're getting a little way away, but I would see some clarification because Nick kind of mentioned that a home-based business, we can limit its outside activity and like some of the stuff that Sean was talking about would produce a lot of public traffic or, or commercial traffic into it. Does that come into play? Like if somebody was doing something where people were, Jared opens a convenience store. I'm not going to be very happy with all the traffic.
But I'm a popular guy. People just come over all the time.
Yeah, on the, so.
Not really.
I haven't reviewed the home-based business changes in quite some time because we haven't really had any questions about it. My memory is that you could, you could regulate like on-street parking for that, and that's probably where, going to your question about all the traffic, where we would be able to regulate there because they're probably not going to be able to park all the people in the driveway, so they're going to be on the public street, and that's where we have more enforcement control there because it's not hap, well, one, it's happening outside the house and two, it's going to be on public property at that point.
Okay.
So yeah, if you could look into what we might be able to do, I mean, because the other thing on this property, I don't know if the property is even large enough to add a whole lot of...
No, it's got some green space in the back.
Runners or kennels or, yeah. So it might even, if we put setbacks in, it might not even qualify for that.
I mean, she's not planning to do any outdoor runs.
Yeah. That's why, that was my concern. I didn't want to delay her business because we want to dig deeper into something else, so.
Yeah, so the ordinance says it should be fine.
Yeah, it didn't have to be for this one, but I would like to really go down the road of digging into this and looking at it. I don't know, I mean, I have a, we have a place by our office in Springfield and it's, but it's in a strip center, and they have a fake turf run thing out in the back and bark like crazy every time I drive by. But I like it. It's fun. But I like it, it's fun.
I think we'll ask some information really quick. Um, the Missouri Department of Agriculture, there's an actual animal care facilities act that regulates dog kennels and other animal facilities, um, and they do have to be licensed, they do have to have inspections and there are careful requirements on space, height and floor space. Um, there's a minimum floor space that's determined by the size and number of dogs and there's not an actual inspection and, um, if dogs are house imparers, you have to modify that by three. There's a whole lot of requirements and limitations that's set by the Department of Agriculture. So she was aware of all these. She was, Elena's got those. And so I think that she has everything and to meet all the standards that you could see of.
Cool.
Yeah, I'm, I think I'm more, more interested in the just kenneling side. The, well, dog hotels. The ones that that's, yeah.
It sounds like we may find out that it is regulated and we're, we're, we're in a good place to, just as long as we know there's something that would help us.
My concern with that would be, and I'm sorry for, you know, just jumping in, but, um.
You're good.
Uh, that's gonna look at it from the standpoint of like an animal welfare situation, which is important, but it's not really gonna look at it in terms of land use, which is probably gonna be just the city looking at that. I don't think the, the Department of Agriculture is gonna care necessarily.
Where it goes.
Now, I haven't looked at the regulations, but just based on my experience, I don't think they're gonna be looking at that particular issue. That's gonna be something that they're going to rely on the city council and the local governing bodies to handle because that's, you know, that's one of our prime roles is the land use side of things. So my concern with just relying on what they would be regulating is it's, it's gonna be all animal welfare and they may not actually, there may not be any regulations on being adjacent to residential or any kind of nuisance stuff like that.
Yeah, because I think most of them in this area are in the county. But I was gonna look at it before it's a problem. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And good discussion. I didn't think the discussion on that one was gonna go, as long as it did. It's amazing what we really dive into. All right. Uh, if there's no other questions, um, I will now declare the public hearing open for Council Bill twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two. If you would like to speak on this. And I will now declare the public hearing closed. Anything else from Council? Thank you. All right, next up, resolutions. Mrs. Coffey, could you please read Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-three?
Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-three, other, a resolution of the Council of the City of Nixa authorizing the city administrator to execute a contract in the amount not to exceed one hundred and sixty thousand five hundred dollars with Advanced Rehabilitation Technology LLC for manhole lining services presenting is Water Superintendent Jason Stutzen.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, this is our annual contractor program for our INI reduction. We're gonna do about ninety manholes this year to keep groundwater and stuff from polluting our sewer system, basically, and having to treat unwater, or untreatable water. Any questions?
It's perfect. Thank you, Mr. Stutzen. That was, that was pretty cut and dry though.
Remember, we could've asked what's man, what is manhole lining, but we're not going to.
No, we won't get into that. All right, if there are no questions. Yep. Um, I will now declare the public hearing open for Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-three. And I will now declare the public hearing closed. Any further comments from Council? Nothing further, I will accept a motion for Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-three.
So made.
First by Mr. Peterson, a second by Ms. Graham. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries.
He must be coming back up. He didn't go to the back.
Yeah, I know. All right. Mrs. Coffey, could you please read Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-four?
Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-four, a resolution of the Council of the City of Nixa authorizing the city administrator to solicit qualifications for water tower maintenance services presenting is Water Superintendent Jason Stutzen.
Now, on the clean water side, uh, this would allow us to go out and get qualifications from some engineering, uh, firms to allow us to do our annual water tower inspection, uh, through the Department of Natural Resources. We're supposed to inspect our towers every five years. Uh, once we've, once we, once we select a certified engineering firm, they will come in, we will clean the water towers, we will drain the water towers, clean them, they will inspect them, redisinfect them and, uh, I'm hoping this contract will go for about three or four years, so we don't have to bring this back anymore for a while, so.
Perfect.
Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Stutzen. All right, no other questions. I will now declare the public hearing open for Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-four. And I will now declare the public hearing closed. Any further comments from Council? Nothing further, I will accept a motion.
So made.
Second.
First by Mrs. Morris, a second by Mr. Vess. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. And last, Mrs. Coffey, could you please read Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-five?
Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-five, a resolution of the Council of the City of Nixa authorizing the city administrator to execute a contract in the amount not to exceed four hundred and fifty thousand dollars with Donaldson Construction Company LLC for micro paving services presenting is Street Superintendent Jeff Frisell.
Mayor and Council, good evening.
Thank you.
Uh, we're coming to you tonight to ask for permission to enter into a contract with Donaldson Construction for micro paving across, across all of Nixa. Uh, this is a not to exceed amount of four hundred and fifty dollars for the micro paving. A micro paving is actually a preservation product.
Four hundred and fifty dollars, huh? Sweet.
Yeah.
Quite a bit. Approximately three and a half miles, did I say four hundred and fifty dollars? Four hundred and fifty thousand, I'm sorry.
There we go.
Yeah, I heard, yeah. A little closer, sorry about that.
I heard the thousand the first time.
Yeah, micro paving is a, uh, is a preservation product that will allow us to maintain our streets in relatively good form without going in with the extra cost of a milling overlay. Uh, this does add skid resistance to the road. It also helps to seal the hairline cracks and things that you see in the roads that prevents water from going in and allows our roads to last longer.
Any questions?
Wish we could do that for four hundred and fifty dollars.
I know, right?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
All right. No other questions, I will now declare the public hearing open for Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-five. And I will now declare the public hearing closed. Any further comments from Council? I will tell you, if you have anyone reach out after it's been done and they say they feel like it's rougher now, it.
It is.
Packs down.
Yeah.
Like it, usually, and it usually doesn't take very long, so we dealt with that before.
But it also makes it where the roads not slick.
Sure does. All right. Nothing further, I will accept a motion.
Can I say something?
Well, yeah.
I'll, I'll say something else, go ahead.
No, you're good. Is it about this?
No.
Okay, you can say it after this, though. You could say, I make a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All right, first by Mr. Lucas, the second by Mrs. Morris. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. What's up, darling?
Sorry, I got ahead of myself here.
That's okay.
I wanna give a big shout out to Jeff and Travis, our Public Works Department. They did two wonderful things on my street yesterday and I cannot thank you enough. The one, there was a big tree that was kinda leaning very far over the street. They came and cut it down and in the meantime, they let me haul a couple of big limbs out of my yard that I couldn't get in my car and they put them in their chipper and chipped them for me, which was good. And the second one, y'all came out today.
Don't you have a Prius?
Huh?
Don't you have a Prius?
Not anymore.
Oh, okay.
My granddaughter had it and then someone hit it and killed it.
Oh.
Yeah, sorry. Anyway, the other one was, they came and mowed the property across the street from my house today. Thank you and we did it, it looks wonderful and I hope you find that guy really, really big for it because he deserves it. But thank you, thank you, thank you. It's really great.
They do an amazing job, that's for sure.
Yes, they do.
I will provide a little update kinda on not just them, but all the other departments. So, um, looking through, and find this hard to believe, but I'm working on stuff for the budget for next year. Um, that starts here pretty soon. Um, going through all of the completed projects on the year and we are currently a hundred and three thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty-two cents under budget.
Wow.
Um, so they are, guys are doing a great job and it's great to see not only projects getting done, but getting done cheaper. Either that or you just patted the crud out of it, so I'm not really sure, but we'll figure that out. Um, I also wanted to, um, a huge thank you to Nixa Police Department. Um, last Thursday, their swift action probably saved a lot of people. Um, had an individual that decided it would be a good idea to travel at an extremely high rate of speed in a residential area, um, and it, it could've ended very badly. It still didn't end great. Drove into a house, but, um, but no one was hurt and outside of that vehicle and it was, that was comforting to a lot of the people in that neighborhood because of the police presence and how quick they responded and took care of everything, so. And also the, uh, the fire department, I didn't know they could cut angles the way they did when they boarded that house back up. Mr. Godby and I both were pretty impressed. Um, they did a good job and the individual who is currently responsible for the house was extremely pleased with everybody involved. Um, so that was, as were all of the neighbors. It definitely happened at a time, there was a lot of people walking and playing outside and could've been terrible. Um, that's all I have for the second. I might think of something else. Anything else from Council?
I just had a question a minute ago when I was looking at that one code. Um, you mentioned that, um, this was not updated. How, what, what's the timeframe of when we approve changes to codes and stuff like that, that they get updated in our, um?
In MUNI code? Whenever they want? Is that pretty accurate?
I think that, I feel like that code was changed a long time ago when we talked about the home occup, home-based business and if what I was reading was inaccurate, then what's the timeline on that?
Codification happens twice a year, so sometimes they get it right, sometimes they don't. The code book I keep in my office, the one that the mayor has, the one Jimmy has, the physical code book is always up to date, so if there is a question, you can always go and read that. Generally, they do it twice a year, so it should be up to date. If not, there is a section in MUNI code, it's off to the left where you can see all of the updated ones, all of the updated codes. So if the code itself doesn't look right, and there should be a reference at the bottom of the code with the ordinance bill where it was updated.
Okay. All right. Thanks, huh?
And I also asked too, because, I mean, there was a lot of chatter on, on social media about us extending the sale of fireworks and additional.
That fireworks one will not be on there for a while.
I, I understand that. That's why I was also asking how long it takes. I, I know we just approved that beforehand and then people were pulling that ordinance and it's like, guys, you gotta give it time to update, but I would think that, that's why I was asking how, how long it takes. I mean, you were saying twice a year, so it's probably every six months it updates.
Yeah, it, it's not, it, there's a lot of the time that the code is going to be out of date, especially if we're having quite a few code updates like we've had recently, but I, I will always have a copy of the most current code available to any citizen that wants to view it, so they can always call my office and I can provide that to them.
Okay, thank you.
And add, adding to that, um, and I'm gonna look at Mr. Pope J Y say this because I have a feeling I'm gonna get some dirty looks from most of staff, but that's why I would like to build our own database, um, searchable on our website to make it easier for the residents to look up code, um, and see the revisions and even be able to link it back to the council meeting when it was approved. So it's actually a lot easier than it sounds, trust me. I've already ripped the entire code database and have it available.
Can I plug here that it'd be really awesome if you had a deputy city clerk that they could work on that all the time?
Budget season's coming up and. That was perfect timing, thank you. But no, very, very good question too. Um, which I'm glad you said that. I did speak to one of the, um, owners, uh, one of the fireworks tents and said that that extra day was extremely beneficial to them.
I'm sure it was.
Um, and so I might've had another idea. You can see them all, they're like. Um, and we can, we can look at this and you can tell me it's a terrible idea, um, maybe throw in another week of being able to sell fireworks in December, since they are legal to shoot off New Year's Eve. Just a thought.
Same note, we'd like to know how it affected, like, obviously we don't know the fire department's called, but you guys could probably have communication with them and how it affected the police department and all that stuff, if there's anything we can do to make it easier on you guys. I, I think they start selling pretty early and I know they get let off pretty early, that kinda stuff.
I did have an officer.
I'm not saying that we need to.
I did have an officer ask, could you please post something on Facebook? People not to call nine-one-one when it's legal to shoot fireworks.
Yeah, um, the good news is whenever they're, when it is legal to shoot fireworks, they're not dispatching those calls for service to us. So as far as, you know, that being translated to us as workload, it's, it's helpful to have an extended period of time. It's after whenever we stop allowing fireworks is whenever we start caring about how many calls for service we're receiving is to the fireworks. So if it's outside the hours or after the prescribed timeframes, that's whenever we start counting it.
Just to clarify, so you don't get a lot of calls before, like, I think we started letting fireworks off on the third, but beforehand, there's not a lot of calls, like, on the first and thirtieth or whatever? Cause when they start selling, a couple of weeks ahead of time?
The twentieth.
Twentieth? I, I feel like they sell them on the twentieth and they, they go off on the twentieth.
Yeah, I mean, we get a, we get a few, but most people are more accommodating to fireworks, uh, being shot early than they are after the prescribed time. That's when they, they tend to be like, all right, that's enough.
The two o'clock in the morning ones that.
Yeah, midnight.
Sorry. And you know, my dog barks at his shadow.
I was disappointed to find out that corgis went to get groomed now that we're allowing grooming in the, I'm just kidding.
Funny thing is, they didn't bother him. All right. Anything else from Council?
I would like to set up Matt, say that Friday's gonna be an excellent day for our Parks Department with a couple of events.
Yeah, we do have a, uh, a, a dog event that we're doing out at the dog park on Friday. Sorry, Jimmy, I failed to mention that earlier today. And so that, that is Friday, um, and then on the twenty-sixth of July, we've got our Movies in the Park, uh, for Despicable Me, so that'll, that'll be coming up too.
Now, I was thinking of the sensory swim Friday morning.
Sensory swim, we have several of those. Those are just an active, uh, program that are, that are going on throughout, so we do have sensory swim on Friday as well.
Awesome.
And then we'll bring another member of the council, the last thing we did, all of our, we started doing contracts, we see a hall remote, you know, we do have, we anticipate construction starting probably for the next couple of weeks. Um, that being said, there will be some party adjustments being made. The area, Australia front, the world will actually be included, the ride will actually block off, um, that's where the construction materials will be put into the store and fit stand for superior. So, uh, we are leaving the area next to that open to the public party so that we can make sure the public still has good access, um, and, um, as well as, um, employees will have access farther to the west, so just we can shift everybody down a little bit, so just, you know, like, look like it's closed off over there or probably, we're still open for business, um, and some of our teams are gonna get some information out on, um, so we're gonna make sure.
All right. Um, last thing, just wanted to thank Mr. Lyles, um, represented the city very well today, um, did a speak. Did a speaking engagement at the Chamber of Commerce luncheon, um, about economic development. It was a very, very good panel, and you did great, as always, and we loved you supporting your Nixa socks up there on stage, so. And then also, I said something about it at the luncheon today, and I actually had received a couple emails since then. Just wanted to actually thank the Communications Department again. They continue to engage the public, um, more than they've ever been. People are, they love the new avenue of receiving information. They love the videos, um, quick, to the point, and it's, it's really, the, I think, I think the PD ones are by far people's favorites, just because they, you know, they get to, seeing all the, the officers on, on the screen, even though the ones you know did not want to be on camera, and that's what makes it even better, for me, at least. So, you know, the hardest thing is, is getting information out there. Everybody wants it, but it's finding the right avenue to do it, and you guys are continuing to do an amazing job, so definitely appreciate you and all staff for getting them the information to put out. Um, it takes, it takes everybody, that's for sure. All right, nothing else. Have a gr- great rest of your week. Meeting adjourned.